Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the May 17th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask our clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alderperson Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Frankie.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Chaplaski. Ten present unexcused.
We have a quorum. Ask that you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be led by Alderman Kevin Haas this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item D in your agendas. We have two items up for public hearing this evening, which we will take as one. Madam Clerk, could you please read the items?
A hearing on the improvement of South 72nd Street from West Beloit Road to Kinniknik River Parkway and portions of intersecting streets by minor asphalt resurfacing with miscellaneous walk, miscellaneous driveway repair, and utility adjustments. And a hearing on the improvement of the east-west alley between South 72nd Street through South Van Dyke Place, West Beloit Road to West Dryer Place, and the east-west alley between South 72nd Street through South Van Dyke Place, West Dryer Place to West Cleveland Avenue by asphalt resurfacing of the alley pavement, storm sewer relay, and utility adjustments.
Mr. Birch.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing will cover both the paving of the 72nd Street and the adjacent alleys. The scope, what will be covered in this public hearing is the scope of the project, the cost, the assessments and how they were determined. We'll take comments and questions from the Common Council and any residents along the road. When the public hearing is closed, the project will be referred to Public Works Committee for discussion and vote, and then the final decision will be by the Common Council. So the limits of the project, 72nd Street will go from Beloit Road to the KK River Parkway. The two alleys are connected to 72nd Street between Beloit Road and Dryer and south of Dryer off of 72nd. This concrete curb and gutter, there were actually about three different years that this was paved in. The oldest is 1950 and the newest is 1956. So the pavement varies in age from 60 to 66 years old. So we're starting to see a lot of failing of the pavement. We have some areas of severe deterioration, some areas where it's just starting to spall and crack. The alleys, about the same, 1956 for one of the alleys. And they were resurfaced in 1985 and in 1989, and that surface is beginning to deteriorate. On 72nd, the project will include the new gutter where it's required. They'll do a base patching where it's required as well. The new asphalt surface will be placed. They'll do some repairs to underground, very minimal, mostly just the manhole structures. Sidewalk replacement will be wherever it's needed. And the street access will be limited at times. The street parking will be very limited. We'll send more information out as the project gets closer, but there'll be parking on the streets, on the neighboring streets. You won't get tickets for parking overnight. On 72nd Street, we're going to be installing some traffic calming. This traffic calming is basically just the bump outs at the intersections. We have reports of excessive speed on this street. We did a study where we found the 85th percentile speed was 35 miles per hour, which is 10 miles an hour over the limit. So these traffic calming methods should make it feel more residential and make it feel like you should be driving slower. So it should slow things down. The different methods are to install chicanes, which are bump outs and pinch points. These encourage people to slow down because the road appears to get very narrow. And through research, these design tools are much more effective than, at lowering speeds, than warning signs or stop signs, which if you put stop signs up, people tend to ignore them, and then they kind of lose a respect for the sign. And traffic calming is self-enforced. So it should have good results on this road. The curb extensions, bump outs, decrease the overall width of the road, and they serve as a visual cue that they're entering a residential area. So you want to slow down through these. The curb extensions increase the overall visibility of pedestrians because they get to step out almost to like where the edge of a parked car would be. So they get a better view of the road and the crossing of the street is narrower. The curb extensions also would encourage slower turning, such as at Beloit and Cleveland. So people will come to a stop instead of rolling through at a higher speed. This project also includes sustainability benefits. The gravel used will be 100% recycled concrete from old pavements instead of mining new gravel from quarries. The concrete itself will have recycled fly ash from coal and electric plants. It'll be used in the concrete to reduce the amount of cement required. New asphalt will be made from 20 to 35% of recycled asphalt pavements to reduce the milling and drilling for new materials. This is a typical finished product of a resurfaced road. On the 72nd Street, we'll be resurfacing to the face of curbs, so the asphalt will go to the curb face. With the pavement, the street lighting, sanitary sewer storm, water main work, the total cost of the project is just over 3/4 million dollars, for estimate. Of that cost, the special assessments will be paying about 31%. Other funding from the utilities, and the general fund will fund the majority of the Special assessments, every lot that abuts this will have a special assessment. As a sample, would be a 50-foot lot. The assessment rate is 36.88 per foot, so the property owner's cost is $1,844. You won't get a bill on this until after March, or March of 2017 at the earliest. And at that time, you'll have options of how you want to pay. You can pay it in a lump sum, or you can choose to have a five-year or 10-year period for payment. Example, payments on a 10-year plan, the first year for that, the bill of $1,844, your first year's payment is $258. Each year, they decrease, and the 10th year, it would be $192. The city has been using the assessments for over 100 years, and historically, the properties have paid up to 100% of the cost of the road because it provides a unique benefit to that property. On this project, the city will collect $240,100, which is about 31% of the total cost. This assessment rate of 36.88 per foot is for all residential properties, no matter where we were doing a road. If we're resurfacing a road on a major street or anywhere else in the city, it's a set price. Everybody pays the same. We've been, for over 100 years, we've been assessing. The Wisconsin state law has been in place for over 100 years. It is held up in the court cases and has been determined to be fair and reasonable for recouping some of the costs of these type projects. The adjacent alleys, the special assessments are the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities pay their fair share. No one is exempt from this, the special, these special assessments. Even though there's 430 properties in the city that don't pay property tax, they would be paying a special assessment on these. Businesses, corporations, manufacturers pay a higher assessment rate to ensure they contribute their fair share. The assessment rate is 46.10 for commercial and 55.32 for manufacturing. The Ameritech utility will pay $9,220 in special assessments on this, even though they don't pay property tax. So this map shows all the properties that have been assessed in the last 10 years. So it pretty much covers the entire city where people are paying the assessments for some improvements. On this project, on 72nd Street, there are six properties that are paying for a long side of their property with the project. There's 10,913 parcels out of the total of 19,762 that have to pay for more than one side of their property. This is where people have corner lots, or you have an alley, you pay for any time there is an improvement on those. We have 3,423 parcels out of the 19,762 pay for more than one street, and 7,490 parcels out of the 19,762 pay for their street and their alley. A sample of a long, we have long side, a sample of the long side, you get a discount for having a long side of the lot. So for example, on this project, the assessment rate is 36.88. If the long side of your property is 120 feet, you would be assessed $4,425.60. We give a 60% discount for the long side, which brings the homeowner's cost down to We do charge interest on the five- and 10-year payment plans. The city borrows monies for this project, and the city pays interest on those municipal bonds over the next 10 years, so that we pass that interest on to the residents that choose the five- or 10-year plan. The city does not make profit on the interest. So at this time, we could take any comments or questions from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Birch, for the presentation. Do we have questions or comments from the members of the Common Council? Okay, seeing none, are there any members of the audience that have questions or comments? If you do, we ask that you approach the podium up here on your most likely left, and give us your name and address for our record, and then please sign in either before or after your comments.
My name is Connie Warehan Scardino. I live on 2929 South 72nd Street. I have a few questions, one being if we are paying towards these roads, are we still going to be charged to park on them, seeing that we did pay for them? Another question I have is I have a brother and sister-in-law who live on 62nd and Beloit, who recently just had their road redone. The work was shoddy. Curbs are falling apart. I have pictures if everybody would want to look at those curbs that had crumbled, that they didn't, that were actually crumbled before they even completed the work. The work was just completed, and they never fixed it. And the work was very shoddy. My sister-in-law has small children. There was cussing and swearing. I'm wondering who is doing the work that's going to be done on our street. That's a concern for me, as I also have children and don't want to have to put up with men swearing and cussing outside of my house all summer long. Another question I have is why does West Dallas charge for the charge for replacing streets when other municipalities don't? And another thing I have to say is if West Dallas is having to borrow already for this project and pay interest and can't obviously afford it, why are we doing this? Why aren't we saving until we can afford this project without going into further debt?
Well, I can answer some of those. We have a certain amount of roadway that we have to refurbish each year, just to keep it in the life cycle. If we let too much of it go, what will happen is it'll snowball, and the next generation of residents will have to bite the bullet and pay for a massive amount of street paving. So we try to catch these streets at the most efficient time. So this particular street is just starting to deteriorate. We can repair it with a minor resurface, which is the least expensive, and it'll save, it'll save the road for another 30 years.
So is that guaranteed, then? We wouldn't have to pay another fee for 30 years?
There's no guarantee. This is just from historic work done. We see it lasting that long.
I'm kind of concerned about that because, as you know, that Jackson Drive Parkway there, that is also asphalt. That is horrendous, but obviously, the county doesn't feel that needs to be replaced, which is 1,000 times worse than 72nd Street. And that asphalt never, we all know, is not as strong as concrete and deteriorates. Quite frankly, I've seen it deteriorate within a couple of years.
The asphalt won't last 60 years like the concrete did, but it should last 30 years on a residential. It won't look the greatest after 30 years, but it'll probably not be rebuilt for 35 or 40 years. So the asphalt relays are, they're a little stronger than just an asphalt pavement. When asphalt pavement starts to go, it has nothing under it holding it. This will have the original concrete under it. We just mill off the top and replace three inches of asphalt. So it should give it extra strength. We've had very good luck with this type of project.
And is there any thought to waiting till West Dallas can afford this, so we don't have to pay interest?
Well, the way, the way we typically finance these is we bond for the, for the project and then pay it back in time.
But there's still interest, correct, that we're paying because we can't afford it?
There's, there's a low-interest fee, yes.
But there is interest.
There is interest, yes. If you choose, you could, you could pay it off in a lump sum with no interest. So you won't receive the bill for a year. If you wanted to save money for a year and pay it off, you could do that, but you have the choice. So you can, you can make extra payments on it. You can pay it off at any time if you choose the longer-term payments. So there's no penalty for paying early.
And why is it that other municipalities don't get charged a fee for roads being replaced, but yet West Dallas does?
Well, there's some municipalities that have other methods, like City of Milwaukee charges a fee for your car that covers their road paving. So every community is a little different. Some, some communities charge an entire area around a road being done, and some charge just the abutting property owners.
Okay. And as far as being sensitive to those homeowners, I understand that you've already kind of made the go on it. I'm wondering why we're having the hearing, because my son, who belongs to the Boy Scouts of America, interviewed your engineer, and he gave him information that this program, this was set to go already this year in June or July.
Well, typically, we get ready the year before with our projects in order to get them designed and get them out on time. The selection process, we have a pretty complex selection process to pick the roads that are being done. We have to catch them at the right time so we can do the least expensive repair and keep the cost down for the city as well as all the abutting residents. So it's not easy to switch once you have it in the plan. We have, we have plans five years out.
So it is already in plan, correct?
It's in the plans, yes. It hasn't been approved yet.
Okay, so there's a chance this approval could change?
But it's up to the council.
Okay, all right. And have we considered doing replacements? And I saw patches in the, you know, the pictures you had shown, I saw patches. Have we considered patches?
The, the problem that patches, well, patches are really temporary. They don't hold well, and the worse the road gets, the more you have to patch it. So we, we monitor that. When a road requires more and more maintenance, that's time to put a resurface on it. Otherwise, we're just shifting the cost to maintenance.
Okay, and if this thing does go through, if you vote for this to go through, are we going to have to continue making payments to park on our streets at night, seeing that we do pay for the streets?
For overnight parking?
Right.
And that's a separate ordinance, but...
In addition to...
Nothing will change on that.
The property tax in West Dallas is very expensive. I know in Meskego, where my parents live, they pay $3,200 for almost a full acre. I don't have a full acre, and I pay $4,000. And they don't have to pay for their streets. So I am a little upset that the cost is being, you know, passed over to the homeowners. I don't understand, you know, why we're even considering it if we can't even afford it.
Well, each community is a little different, and in the newer communities, like Meskego, you said?
Well, they actually live in a very old farming community. Their neighborhood's very old.
Most of those were, the roads are put in by the developers, and...
This is a very old, their house was built 1950. So I believe my house is newer than their house.
Okay. Well, in a lot of the newer communities, they haven't really had to rebuild roads yet. And when they do, they do a cheap asphalt road. So they, they haven't run into the aging infrastructure like the older cities have yet.
Well, I disagree, because I lived there my whole life. I grew up there. I lived there till about the age of 25, when I was married. And it didn't look cheap to me, and it held up very well that whole time I was there for 25 years, and from what I've seen, and they still live there and continue to live there. And it's not cheap. It's, it's held up very well. I would say better than what we're seeing within the city.
Well, like this road, for example, the newest part of the road is 60 years old. So if you looked at it 10 years ago, or if you, if you moved away 10 years ago and lived for 40 years on that road, you would think that the roads were great, because you never had to pay for one, and it looked pretty good. So it depends on where you are, and, you know, not everybody gets assessed in their lifetime in, in a city. So it's, I know it's not pleasant to get an assessment bill for something you didn't ask for.
No, or, nor to pay, to have to park on it after you pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience have comments or questions?
My name is Steve Stelter. 7128 West Arthur. Basically, 72nd and Arthur. Thank you very much for the presentation. Answered a lot of questions. What I'm wondering is if this is the time and place in order to motion or petition for postponement of the project. I would, I think this is a noble task, but I simply really can't afford it right now, saving all the sob stories. But in a year from now, I'm sure I'd be back on my feet. So I, I'm proposing, and I'm sure many others would like a little time to kind of get, get their finances in order, whatever, to anticipate this. So I would like to ask for the project to be postponed for one year. Is that what, something that is...
You can, you can make that statement, but the decision won't be made right now. It's going to be discussed in committee when we break for recess at the Public Works Committee.
Okay, I have a separate question. In the presentation, I noticed something I wasn't expecting. There was one line that talked briefly about street lighting. Does this project have anything to do with rearranging street lighting or changing street lighting?
I'll have to see if that's included in this project, but...
It was budgeted, it was a line...
Yeah, budgeted, I think it was.
So what we'd normally do is run in new cable, because what's out there is a high-voltage system, and it's a series system. So if one light goes out, they all go out. The newer system we're putting in is a low voltage. It would be LED lights, so it's, it's much more cost-effective lighting.
Okay, and how could, how could I learn more about that lighting? Nature of the question is, I'm an avid amateur astronomer. I use a telescope frequently. And one of the reasons I selected my property is because of the location of the street lights in the neighborhood. My backyard is well-suited for looking at stars and planets and such. A street light would really, could, if it's not the right street light, you know, impede that. And also, I would be interested in looking at more of the, more of the project for the lighting considerations to improve lighting or make it more spot-focused.
The LED lights are more spot-focused. They are, they're going to point right down at the road. So you don't have that lighting going up into the yards like you do with the current lighting.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. I have to excuse myself. I'm actually on my lunch hour. I work second shift, so I am going to actually depart, but please take care.
Thank you. There was another hand. Somebody else had comments or questions?
My name is Hermana Ceteria, and I live at 2801 South 72nd Street. And with the bump outs, is there a street that's near 72nd Street that we could take a look at it, what it really looks like?
We have some bump outs on National Avenue, by the farmer's market.
By the farmer's market, okay.
I know in, we had examples from Locust Street, and I think it's the east side of Milwaukee, but...
Yeah, that's kind of...
I can't think of, we can find that out for you if you want to talk to me later.
Okay, yeah, because I would like to kind of take a look at it.
Okay.
And then I did call you ahead of time, too, and you said it would take about two months for this project?
A little over that, maybe 10 weeks.
10 weeks. And then you'd start like end of July, was that it?
Yeah, beginning of August, end of July, that timeframe.
Okay, so July and, or August and September would be this timeframe. Okay. Thank you very much. That was my only questions. And I was going to ask about the lighting, too, but it was already answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Go ahead.
Mr. Ernst, address is 2911 South 72nd. Mr. Ernst, address is twenty-nine eleven South Seventy-second. And I'd like some clarification on this bump out. Is it going to make our street narrower?
What it'll do is in the intersections, it bumps out around the curb return about the width of a parked car. So it'll be like you're going by a parked car, about the equivalent of that. And what it does to the driver, when you see them, it, it makes you feel like you need to slow down to go through them. So the drivability of the road is going to be the same, but it's just a, an effect it has on the drivers. It also provides less distance for pedestrians to cross, which is nice with the park there and, and the kids crossing. So it is a, it's a safety item.
So it would be at the intersection, not the entire street?
No, not the entire street, no. In fact, it, it shouldn't impact any parking along the street.
Thank you.
I'm Denise. I live at twenty-five sixty South Seventy-second Street. Nice to see my neighbors and actually some of my clients here. So it's kind of nice. My big thing, I think, is the affordability issue. I work seasonally. I'm currently unemployed. When I look to make any kind of, what I consider major, anything two thousand dollars-ish is major for me. I like to have some time to do it. I don't think we've had enough time and I think that's kind of the consensus of a lot of the people here. Dallas, we are not a economic huge entity. Most of my neighbors are similar to me, working-class people. Not to get into any real personal stuff, but I've lived in my house for almost thirty years in West Dallas and my beginner house. Well, my beginner house, I'm still there. I'm a senior person and I'm still in my beginner house because I've had to use my house as a bank to do some of my projects that I've had to do in an older home in West Dallas. Over the years, a few of the repairs I've had to do were because of work that was done by the city, whether it was in adjacent alleys, street, stuff like that. I've had to fix my plumbing. I've had fixtures fall from roadwork. I mean, there's been some kind of crazy things from city work, so when city work is set, I'm a little nervous. If you go to the north of me, I'm on Seventy-second, twenty-five hundred. If you go to the north of me, we just had some work done there. It's horrible. The street now, when you go by it, you have to drive around the hole to avoid the hole and I never noticed a hole there prior to the work. If you go the other direction, which would be south of me on the same corner, on the twenty-five hundred on Seventy-second Street, there was some work done around the fire hydrant there. I don't know if it was water work or something for the accessibility of the fire department, I don't know. That is real shoddy there too. The old stuff is holding up a lot better than the new stuff. And I've been there a long time, so I can pretty much tell you that with some pretty good facts that that's the case. My alley, it had some work done. I'm trying to think, my new neighbor is there and the person that was there before her passed in two thousand nine, so I want to say maybe the work was done in oh-five. It kind of stopped at his yard. He was assessed, I was not. The alley work was cut in half. He was assessed, which is really weird because my alley is half West Dallas and half Milwaukee, but yet he was a full assessment. My across the neighbors, God bless them, it's the park and the old people's home that is city property. I'm assuming none of them are assessed at any of that because it is the city. So, you know, there's some possible revenue that should be shared there. If we're sharing revenue with me and all my neighbors, I think the revenue should be shared with places that are getting federal funding for rent assistance and things of that nature. When you had given us a little presentation, and I'm sorry because I did send an email, but I didn't get a letter from anybody. I sent it to a few people on the board and the engineer, but I didn't get any response. I guess I didn't ask for a response, so that's probably why I didn't get one, I'm assuming. You were saying that the asphalt repair in your presentation was minor. I didn't get a chance to really see the numbers real well on there, but those numbers to me don't look minor. Even if we're sharing them, I don't know how many residents this affects, you know, mathematically. I didn't get a chance to look at the books, didn't really want to. I, you know, my blood pressure couldn't take it. So I'm wondering, when you're saying minor repairs and then we see this Civic Center presentation of what stuff is looking like. You know, I have a thing here, I'm trying to fix my fence so my dog doesn't go out and terrorize my neighbors and I'm going through company after company after company trying to get something that I can afford because my dog is like leash now and I can't even afford a fence to keep him in. You know, this here, my cheapest presentation to me was two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which I'm probably going to go with, but I had to wait, you know, over a year to get that money together and I'm not building a fence and expecting somebody else to pay for it and I'm not building a fence and going to finance it. So that's the kind of attitude I've always had at my house and that's why I've had to use it as a bank to get that cheaper interest and things like that. But I'll be darned if I'm going to continue to pay any more interest to the city. My real estate taxes, because like I said, I'm unemployed, seasonal, I just finished paying this year. And boy, oh boy, the city doesn't give you any leeway with that, which I understand. You know, if you owe a debt, it should be paid, but now they want not only you to pay your current annual taxes, catch up your last year's annual taxes and now put a two thousand dollar assessment on top of that. You know, we're not Elm Grove or Brookfield residents where two and three people that live in the house are out there working. I mean, we got little old homes that we are just making it matter. We're trying to beautify our actual living spaces and you know what? I'm going to build my fence before I fix a curb on the street that doesn't need fixing, just for it to be broken in a year's time. Couple other things too here on that mathematical equation up there, I think it was quoted, we're, you're saying in the pieces of the pie that the residents are paying, I believe it was like thirty-one percent of it. No, that's not true. We're paying the big piece of the pie because we're paying the thirty-one percent plus we're paying the sixty-seven or whatever the other piece of the pie is with our taxes and our interests and our late penalties or any other thing that we are paying on Not only are we being charged for that, we're being charged for other services, which if you use those other services, West Dallas also charges for those. So it really worries me as to where all this money is going, that we pay, like if all of my counterparts here say pay three thousand dollars a year and that's going there, where is that money really being spent if it's not being spent on things that we need? Another thing that I wanted to do is ask, we were told in the presentation, we were promised a unique benefit. I don't know what that unique benefit would be. I, I just don't see it. And one other thing that I had a question, so just give me a second here. Oh, the speed limit. They did place that outside, matter of fact, they put it right in front of my house. I would suggest that if they put that anywhere and everywhere, everybody everywhere drives ten miles an hour more than they should on just about every road that I've ever traveled on in my whole life, everywhere. That street does, it is adjacent to the senior center. Over the time, a lot of the seniors there have called and complained about kids playing basketball in the park. They took the basketball hoops down. We called and said, why aren't the basket hoops there? Well, it made too much noise. Well, that's kind of crazy. So if there's residents complaining that maybe the people are traveling too fast on the road, I don't see it. Like I said, I've lived there thirty years. Everybody's opinion is different. But it could be those seniors who, by the way, aren't paying for any of this change. So they will complain and complain and complain just to talk to somebody maybe and not getting the work. I took some photos, it's on my phone if anybody wants to see it, of my street right where I live. It looks pretty darn good. I mean, I'm not a engineer. I don't pretend to be one or I don't play one on TV either, but my street does not look that bad. And it sounded like Connie, like there are streets that probably need a lot more repair than this. So I guess those are my questions and statements.
Okay. Well, as far as giving you time, I mean, you're, you're not going to even receive a bill until next March. So, and the, the, if you choose to go on a payment plan, you don't make a payment until you get your tax bill. So that, that payment would be included in your tax bill. So you have a good year and a half before you have to pay...
I make two hundred and ninety-four dollars a month. I make two hundred and ninety-four dollars a month currently and that's unemployment And I'm over fifty. And I'm looking for a job.
I think what he was responding to was your comment on if something's costing two thousand dollars, up here.
Oh, thank you. You saw me looking. I'll take my glass off and then I can see you.
Sorry. No, I think he was responding to your comment on a two thousand dollar purchase, you need to have more time to make that decision. And I think what he was trying to say was that the bill is not coming until next March and then you won't have to start paying on that, you know, if you do a five-year or ten year plan until the tax bill comes for twenty seventeen.
I thought on the plan, there's an interest charge.
There's an interest charge if you choose to go on the five-year, ten-year plan. And you, you would make a payment on the payment plan, which includes your interest, if you choose to not pay it when you get the bill.
I guess for me, and call me old-fashioned, I try not to pay for what I can't pay for because I don't have that income. I don't have that extra out there to pay for that stuff.
Let me address your other question. You, you were saying that we call this a minor resurface. That's what it's classified as because that's the type of work we can do to this road to save it for another thirty years. If we let it go further, it's going to be a major resurface or a reconstruct, which if it went to a reconstruct, it would cost every resident at least two thousand dollars more than this. So this is the least expensive fix that we could have for this road and get the life out of it.
It's, it's best bang for your buck essentially.
Right, and if, if we put it off, it'll become a more costly repair.
Who took the photos or who did the analysis to decide what should be done or where it should be done or is it just based on archaic records or what is it?
No, we have a, a very complex process. We actually go look at every road. Every other year, each section of road gets a rating and it gets notes on what type of failures you're seeing or, you know, just a general condition report. So we watch that, we watch the age of the pavement, we watch how much maintenance is being done to that pavement. So all these things kind of come together in the decision on which one to do next because we have, we have a set budget on how much we can spend on the road. So we can, need to make it go as far as possible.
What about a reduce plan without the, I forgot what they're called, like shutouts or whatever it was? What about a reduce plan where we don't have all that beautification?
Your, your assessment bill is not based on what is getting done out there. That's the standard rate for a minor resurface for any road.
But the ta, but our tax dollars are probably paying for those shutouts or whatever it was called. Forgive me for not knowing what they were called.
Bump outs.
Yes, it is.
Bump outs, that's it, yeah.
But it, it is, I guess the, it's, it's the, the new way of designing roads, to try to make them more livable and just better to live on the road. So that's what it's all about. So they really don't cost that much to do these. It's not, if you looked at how much work there was involved, it's a little bit of curb work.
Now, I think it was Connie who had asked before if it was already on our assessment. It is because I printed my assessment out and my assessment, this is my house here, my little itty-bitty nothing house. It says two thousand sixteen, assessed by engineer, engineering description, street minor asphalt resurfaces, initial cost at eighteen forty-four, like what was all on there. And it shows as an outstanding assessment on my bill here, which is funny because I just finally caught up from last year. Also, which was really kind of cool about this, when I went on and looked at this, they told me that my assessment was updated, I think it was May, like the new photo and stuff like that, like May sixteen by the city assessors. Well, the picture they have on my assessment is my property from like thirty years ago. I took down, it cost me forty-five hundred dollars to take down a locust tree and a green tree because the locust tree, we had to get in some kind of special boom because of the city constraints and stuff like that to take down this really, really heavy overgrown tree. But anyway, nothing said, but that was forty-five hundred dollars last year. But I took down that tree and the stuff in the front of my house hasn't been there probably what's on this picture probably for at least ten years, but yet it's telling me that the assessor photos have been updated as of five one two thousand sixteen.
The assessment may have been...
No, it says assessor photos updated five one two thousand sixteen of my house.
That, that's something we'd have to talk to the assessor about and we've got engineering up here.
So I'm just wondering how the photos or the assessment was done on my street, if this is how the assessment on my house was done with an old photo. I was wondering if we had current or new information on the street.
It's a completely different department doing a completely different, separate from the roads. I mean, we can ask them, but it's...
I mean, I'm just curious, like how the, that's, that's why that was brought up because I thought if, if that was done that way, just based on archaic records, what, you know, like, oh, we haven't touched this street in thirty years.
Yeah, this rate is the footage of frontage you have on, on the street you live on. So if it's a thirty-foot lot, it's thirty feet times the assessment rate.
Right.
If you have, that's how it's...
I was just wondering like how they know to fix that street? Did somebody actually physically look at that street or was it because it hasn't been looked at?
Yes, yes. That's, that's the way we do it. We go look at them, we put a, we do basically a report that has to go to the state of Wisconsin every other year. So it's a regular process.
And my final question too is like, I wonder if you have us all here just so you have like a quorum, so, so you meet that responsibility or if you really truly are listening to the taxpayers because if anyone in this room wants a better place to live, it's going to be me and probably everybody here. Don't take our objections that we don't want our stuff improved. We just need time to do it, pay for it, accept it and not be told that that's what we have to do after we've already given all that money that we think should pay for this to begin with anyway. And we are paying for a big percentage of it. If you do the math on that breakdown, thirty-one percent on the frontage of our yard based on our sixty-seven percent or whatever it is on our taxes, we are paying it. And then, you know, the residents that are maybe city residents, I mean, do you really have that many commercial residences in this proposed area? Probably not, probably not. And I know when I talked and called, they're like, well, you'll get your driveway done, you'll get this done. I mean, I don't have a driveway. It's a proposed alley. I think most of us have an alley access. That's what I'm guessing. But they're like, oh, but you'll get your driveway done.
This, this project wanting to include the driveway approach. We just pave into the driveway approach, we're not replacing them.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alfred Ceteria. I live at twenty-eight oh one South Seventy-second Street, West Dallas, Wisconsin. And I have a question about your asphalt. You said there's cold fly ash in the concrete. In the concrete?
Yeah, so in the base patching or curb replacements or sidewalk, we call for fly ash in the concrete. It basically replaces some of the cement you would have normally had to put in. It gets the same strength.
Will that cause cancer-causing dust from traffic?
The, the concrete in the road now probably has fly ash. So they, they did fly ash back in the fifties.
Okay, now, now you're proposing a minor fix on the road. How thick is the asphalt going to be? How far are they grinding down into the concrete?
They grind down about an inch and a half, the two inches, and it'll be at the, at the curb side, it's more, and as you go up to the crown, it's less. There's a three-inch layer of concrete. There's two layers of concrete, the base layer and then the finish.
Then you're going to put asphalt over it and asphalt will have varying thicknesses from say two inches to one inch to two inches?
No, it's pretty, it's pretty much the same, about three inches.
Okay, and then what happens after the first winter, the spring breakup and thaw? The road will all crack up like it's on KK, Connecticut River Parkway down there, that's all busted. That's all busted and all is falling apart?
What we do is, I mean, when you put asphalt over concrete, after a few years, you see the cracks in the concrete show up through the asphalt. After a couple of years, we go in and seal the cracks. So they, they don't deteriorate and, and start breaking apart.
Well, they, they've been sealing the cracks in front of my house for over 40 years now. And it's not doing the trick.
Well, it, it lasted, normally a concrete road.
They use asphalt and they use liquid rubber and none of it works.
The, the life expectancy of a concrete road is, is 40 to 50 years. And that's exceeded that.
Johnson Street School is on 84th and Beloit? There used to be Johnson Street School. Now it's a church and school. Well, on the other side of there, they put an old, brand-new concrete road and curbs there.
Yes.
Yes, why can't we have the same?
It, it has to go through the life cycle to extend out the life of that pavement as efficiently as you can. And the typical lifespan goes, concrete road, after 40, 50, 60 years in this case, you come in and put a surface on it that'll give it another 30 years' life. If we were to tear it out and replace it, we'd be losing all that value that's still in it.
On my property, they had to fix a water shut-off valve, okay? So I had a rounded curb on both sides. They busted out the one rounded curb there and they put in the form just a two-by-fours like so. And I told the guy, I says, it should be rounded like the other side. He says, oh, the concrete finisher will do that. I says, really? Well, I happened to be out of town that day and I didn't get home till 1 o'clock in the morning. And there it was, tire gash. So I took my sledgehammer and knocked it off and rounded it off myself. I had to help these guys out. Okay, then, on these so-called bump outs, they narrow down, correct?
Yes.
Have you ever been up to Niagara Falls?
No, I haven't.
There's a big, huge expanse of water up there and it's narrowed down. And the water goes real fast then.
Yeah. It works the opposite for cars. They jam up like a funnel.
Then you got people wanting to make a right turn onto one of these here bump-out corners. And you got somebody coming from the other way and there ain't enough room for the two cars.
You do have, you have enough room for two cars to go through.
Well, not the way some people drive.
Well, yeah.
They, they need two lanes to make their turn.
Well, these are meant to slow people down. So they'll be making, they'll be going by each other a lot slower.
And also, I was told by the surveyors that every corner is going to have a bump out. That means east and west corners?
Yes. All the bump out is, is where the, where currently the curb goes around the corner.
Right.
It's going to get moved out about six feet.
And how does that work up on 72nd and Cleveland? Is that going to be on both sides then?
I have a, I can show you the diagram if you want to look at it after, during the break. We have, I have some pictures of what it's, what it'll look like.
And who's going to cut the grass in these little bump outs?
Well, the bump out is going to give that corner property owner about 60 more square feet of grass to cut, so.
And what about the snowplows coming through, damaging the curbs and also damaging the?
These, these will be marked.
Pardon?
They'll be marked so that the snowplow driver will see them and.
I see quite a few curbs that the, the snowplows massage a little bit.
Right. We will try to educate them as much as possible before it snows, so.
And your laterals, is that going to be put in before the?
The laterals.
The road or afterwards?
Laterals were optional.
Okay, so say somebody wants laterals, when, when are they going to be put in?
When they're doing the repairs on the manholes. And we're doing one sanitary sewer repair, so that crew would install a lateral. I haven't had anyone opt for one yet.
And when they put in the laterals, they'll have to tear up the sidewalk and tear up the, say you got your sub-pump out in the back of the house.
Well, it'll only go just past the sidewalk and it's capped and buried. And from getting it from there to wherever you want to connect, that's up to the property owner to do that.
Directly to the sewer then?
It goes directly to the storm sewer. So it can only be clear water that's connected. So your downspouts or sump pump can be connected to that.
Because we've had some people where their houses were flooded out when the storm sewers backed up.
Not storm sewers, that would be the sanitary sewers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And we've done an extensive amount of work in that neighborhood on the sanitary system. And I don't think you'll see any backups anymore.
So presently, 72nd Street is 30 feet wide, because I measured it tonight.
Yes, it'll be about 22.
And that means up on 72nd and Cleveland, five feet in, five feet in, five plus five means 10? Minus 30, you've got a 20-foot opening there.
Yeah, you'll have, you'll have actually a 22-foot opening.
A 22-foot opening?
22-foot opening will be left, so.
Not if you come out five feet from the curb? Five feet and five feet make 10 feet?
And it's coming out four feet there, so.
Oh, I was told by the surveyor it comes five feet.
Yeah, there, there will be a 22-foot roadway through there, curb to curb.
And then you say about slowing, speeding down? Well, the paramedics and the fire department, they have their sirens running from 72nd and Cleveland all the way down to KK Parkway. And you can't see a soul in sight in their full-blown sirens and speed. That, how is that going to affect them?
I don't think it'll affect them at all, so.
No, they'll just barrel right on through. And your speed bumps will mean nothing.
They're not speed bumps. There's no bump in the road.
Why don't you put a speed bump in then? Then they can whoop-de-doo.
It'll slow the ambulance down.
Pardon?
They're, they're a little more dangerous.
They're more exciting.
So.
Could, could the residents get a, a vote? Whether they want speed bumps or if they want bump outs or they want nothing? A democratic situation.
Well.
Put it up to the residents to have a vote on it.
You certainly could suggest what you'd like. You certainly could suggest what you would like to see on a road. But we can't do all suggestions. I mean, we have to do what's the safest.
It gets narrowed down when you vote. You got three choices. The, the, the one with the highest amount is the winner. Right?
Well, usually the design of the road isn't a democratic process, so.
Well, it seems, it seems more like a dictatorship.
Well, we have to, we have to design to give you the most efficient road and to solve issues if there had been any on that road. So that's what we're attempting to do here.
I don't believe it. It will not slow speeders down, period.
Well, we'll have to see because we don't have a lot of examples.
You, you can just go up to the corner on 72nd and Cleveland tomorrow morning and watch some cars go by. Like there's no stop sign there at all.
Yeah.
What about that? And there, there's no speed bumps there. There's no bump outs. There's stop signs, but people can't read.
Yeah, well, hopefully the, these will help give people the feeling they need to slow down, so.
Well, I don't believe it, but put it up to a vote and, and we'll see what rules. Then I'll be satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Cornelli, 2775 South 72nd Street. What, I don't know if you can answer this, but with the repairs on the road, will that cause a change in the assessment to our property value? Or has it in the past historically?
I'm not aware of any change to any assessment due to the road.
So it usually goes up? So, okay, so in, in that case, would that then cause our property taxes to also increase?
No.
Well, that's what I mean, that can be, you know, an increased property value is a unique benefit.
It's hard to, it's hard to answer that because we don't know what the tax rate will be for the budget for 2017. That's, that's decided in December. But I would say it's quite possible.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions, comments?
Paul Merkel, 2850 South 72nd Street. I have one comment and two questions. My first comment on the white LED street lighting, a prime example for everybody to see is on Hicks between 76th and 80th when they repaved that whole street last year, going up Dallas, West Dallas salvage. It's a real good example of anybody to go and look for the, how the LED lights look. And between 99th and Highway 100 on Cleveland Avenue. Those are two prime examples. And my question on the bump out is, when it narrows down to 22 feet, is there going to be some kind of sign that says traffic calming? Is there going to be some kind of reflective paint where it goes down? Where, where it makes the curve into it? Is there some, anything like that planned?
There'd be a sign, an object marker at the bump out.
Okay.
So that's a reflective yellow and black sign.
Okay, and my last question is on this, this lateral thing that is an option to everybody for $681. Half the people in my block put their sump pumps right out to the, to the city sidewalk. They drain their water and half of them drain it in the backyard. Is, does that have anything to do with this, if you need it or not? Does it make a difference?
Well, each homeowner has to decide whether they need it or not. It, it does.
How do you know if you need it or not, is my question?
If you have, if you have a problem with water on your yard, you probably need it. So if you're running your sump pump out on the walk, that violates plumbing codes by running, you can't discharge water out into the right-of-way.
Okay.
So if they were forced to move that and they have no place to move it to, then they probably need a, a lateral.
And more so if you have standing water in your yard from heavy rains too?
Yeah, it, I mean, if, most times it's due to sump pumps. Because sump pumps run in the winter and you get icing problems and things like that, so. But if you just have a very small piece of grass and you got a big roof, you may have problems just from your downspout discharge.
Okay.
So it's, it's the best to leave it run on the grass if you can.
Right.
But if it causes a problem, that's what these are for.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole and I live at 2905 South 72nd Street. I just have two things. First, the cost, I do think it's a lot. Based on our taxes, they're a lot higher than anybody else that I know. I think we pay a lot of money every year. And like she said, we're paying the majority of this, whether it's in our yearly taxes or the special assessment. So I think more time should be given to the homeowners. There's a lot of elderly people, especially on my block, that may not have the funds and don't want to pay the interest. So I think to just bring it on them and say, guess what? This is what's going to happen, isn't fair. The second thing is the speed. I know from KK, I live almost to Dakota, they just fly. And I'm not talking about 10 miles over, I'm talking 20, 30. I mean, just, and I have young kids. I think a speed bump should be put in or something. I don't think a stop sign's going to work because on Cleveland, nobody stops. They all just go whenever. So I would, if this is going to happen, I don't think that bump out thing is going to work. Because we don't even have a, an intersection there. It's just like a T there. But I would suggest a, a speed bump because people don't slow down. I mean, I wanted to throw things at cars because they're flying down my street and my kids are outside. So those are just my suggestions.
We, we are doing bump outs at the T intersections as well, so.
I understand, but I really don't think that's going to help anything. They don't care. They, they don't even care. I mean, as tore up as the street is, they still fly down it. So, I mean, and our street's not that bad, but I don't think these bump outs are going to stop them or slow them down at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alex. I live at 2766 South 72nd Street. You know, I'll be honest, I grew up in the country. So I, I moved into the, the city after I got out of the military. And it's been quite an adventure. I have about as much confidence in the city of West Dallas doing any work on my house as I do my three-year-old making dinner. I mean, a couple of years ago, you guys went in and did some water work, some to the water lines? And this one got me. There was my front yard digging stuff up. And I asked them, I was, you guys are going to plant grass? They're like, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then I saw some, looked like hay on my yard. And so I was like, all right, cool, grass is going to grow. Two years later, the hay's still there, the grass isn't. I mean, that, literally, that, that's the quality of work you do. And quite frankly, where I come down on this is, the nice part about democracies, the people that make this decision, you're enabled to be on the next ballot. You want to go ahead and go against what the people are telling you? The people that live on these streets, maybe we can find someone who can do your job a little bit better. And that, that's literally where I come down. Because you know what? You don't live on these streets. We do. Maybe people are going a little bit faster down the street. Heck, I agree with the speed bump idea. The first time you lose a bumper is probably the last time you're going to fly down that road. These narrow, when I think of these narrow streets, I just, you know, at the intersections, all right, what about when someone moves and they have to get the moving truck? And they have to do those wide turns? And so the street's 22 feet wide. You think people are flying down those streets are really going to stop? Sounds like, you know, proper planning and common sense maybe isn't so common. And I, I just, I just am telling you. You know, I, one of the things I do is I'm one of the district commanders for the VFW. And I, I promise you one thing. From everybody I work with that are vets, people are really unhappy with what especially the, the municipalities around Milwaukee do with the tax dollars. My parents live in a house assessed at three times what mine is. We pay more than them in taxes. They had their road redone two years ago and paid nothing in Racine County. So I tell you what. Ultimately, we can sit here all day and say, hey, we believe this and that and we believe this is right and wrong. There's a 95% chance the mine's already made up. And this is literally a check-in-the-box so you can go ahead and continue with your plans. But if there's one thing I love about America and, you know, when I fought in the Marines, is, is we, we, I stand for five, we fight for democracy. Either you listen to the people that voted you in or the same people are going to vote you out. Thank you.
Does anybody else have comments or questions on this item for public hearing?
I'm back again. Alfred Ceterior from 2801 South 72nd Street, West Dallas, Wisconsin. I would like to make a motion at this time for the residents who live on that street, South 72nd Street, to have three choices. Redo the street as is.
Sir, I'm going to stop you, sir. Sir, I'm going to stop you right now because this is a public hearing for comments or questions, not motions. So you can try to, if you want, to go to the Public Works Committee and bring this up. But it's not, this is just to listen and to hear. But it's not, this is just to listen and to hear the questions.
Okay.
So it's not a motion, just we can't take action on a motion at this time.
All right.
Does anybody else have comments or questions on these two items for public hearing? Okay, seeing done, we will close public hearing, number one and number two. And we will move on to item E on your agendas, which is citizen participation. This is an opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you keep your comments to approximately five minutes and we try to keep this portion of our agenda to 30 minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Oh, my legs are numb from sitting here. Name is Robert Brown. I am with Stop the Violence Incorporated. And last time I was here, I'm going to try to run this all over in five minutes here. I brought up the fact about the same-sex marriage and I did file that lawsuit at federal court and it got dismissed three weeks before it's to be heard. So much for, people yelling, things don't go right. But anyway, I did go back to see Abley and some of the county supervisors right when they're running for election, what was that, a month and a half ago or whatever? I gave a proposal that they keep all the bathrooms and I knew this was coming because I researched things and I make it my business to find things out. And I found out that this is going to happen, that they're going to have, you know, men in the little girls' room, vice versa. And I knew this was coming, I put a proposal to them. Abley, I couldn't get a hold of him when he come back in the courthouse and see me and the county supervisors. Didn't he want no part of it? They said, it's all taken care of, don't worry about it. You know, I got nowhere with them. So I wasn't going to spend any more time. I spent a year on that lawsuit. Okay, the other thing, I'm here because we got a meeting coming up in South Milwaukee and, and it's going to concern you here sooner or later too. Just like the same-sex marriage stuff, you know, all the schools now, Mr. Obama, our wonderful president, says now he's passing this without anybody meeting about it. They can share the bathrooms, the boys and the girls at all the public schools. And that's his law. King, king president, I guess we'll call him. So, okay, the Stop the Violence now, we got a meeting in South Milwaukee dealing with the Muslims. And I agree with Trump and somebody, they're, they're coming in, thousands of them. Obama, before he leaves office, is going to have 100,000 of them in. The FBI is looking at it, everybody. And there's no Christian groups coming in. Out of the last 10,000, there were three. Why is that? Because the women and children are raped and otherwise are killed. So we got a problem. I'm just going to give you the address, anybody interested in this meeting, because I only got a couple of minutes here. It's going to be on South Milwaukee, the Community Center at 2424 15th Avenue. And I just want to go into the schools once again, what's going on with our beloved government here and the Muslims. The schoolchildren are taught to say there is one God, Allah. While Christian children are prohibited from praying in the schools. Schoolchildren are forced to dress in barakas, that's the women, you know, those big scarf things. That's going on in the schools. They're banning pork in that, the kids can't bring lunch boxes with hot dogs and that's. All the rules protecting and supporting the Muslims are being implemented in the schools and our nation that was founded under God, all those prayers and everything else is being tossed out. And that's spreading all over. We've got a speaker coming on, these people, I got to have 200 people there Saturday at this meeting and he speaks all over the United States, former Muslim. And I, by the way, there are, you can get a Quran at the West Dallas Library. And I've been going down to these Muslims since 9/11, talking to the imams that run it. And it's very disturbing and I never knew what was going wrong. I could never reach them and saying, what are you guys thinking of with all this stuff? Well, once I learned to read the Quran, I knew. And let me just give you a couple quick, short verses from the Quran.
Mr. Brown, you have one minute remaining.
Okay. Muslims should not take the infidels as friends. Any religion other than Islam is not acceptable. Maim and crucify the individuals if they criticize Islam. Terrorize and behead those who believe in scriptures other than the Quran. This is in America from the Quran. The unbelievers are stupid. Urge the Muslims to fight them. The last one, when opportunity arises, kill the infidels whenever you catch them. This is not Sharia law that's done in the foreign countries. And sooner or later, you're going to have a mosque around here. That's how fast they're coming. I'm just giving you a little warning ahead of time.
Good evening. Scott Espisette, 6300 West Beloit Road. I'd like to put out to those in the audience as well as the board members that Mark Lutz is going to have a customer appreciation get together this coming Thursday at West Alice Cheese and Sausage Factory.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Violet Brown. I'm the wife of Robert Brown. And I want to admit to everybody that I'm proud to be an American. I have four brothers in the military service. And right now, our constitution is under attack. And I want to say that we love American, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, our Declaration of Independence, and that's all under attack. We love our firemen, we love our policemen, we love our American law. We do not want to advance Sharia law in our schools, in our churches, in our community. When my grandparents came from Germany, they didn't say, let's put Adolf Hitler in some of our rules and laws in America. They didn't do that. So we're trying to keep America, America. So when anybody comes to our nation, they should really assimilate into our culture. And we do not want to be forced to have Sharia law put on any of us. Again, we are Americans, we believe in America, and we, let's stay American.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing done, we will close citizen participation. We will move on to item F on our agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on page two of your agendas. Mayor's report this evening, I just have a couple of things. Many of you are aware with the Crime Stoppers organization in West Alice. They are a volunteer group that puts up reward money for crimes and graffiti and things that have been done in our schools and in our community. They were, have been very prominent in putting reward money up for some, like the bomb threats at West Alice Central and things like that. They are having a fundraiser at Culver's on Highway 100 on the 23rd of May, which I believe is next Monday. And a portion of the proceeds will be going to support Crime Stoppers continuing funding of their account for rewards. I believe that McGruff will be making an appearance if anybody wants to take their children for ice cream. The only other thing I want to mention is this is the last council meeting before the West Alice à la carte festival, which is on Sunday, June 5th, in our downtown business district. They're going to have food trucks, they're going to have live music, they're going to have area for kids, they're going to have a pet area, lots of vendors. And this festival has been getting bigger and better every year. I think they had over 4,000 attendees last year. So that's June 5th, it's on a Sunday from noon until 6:00. That concludes the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any alderpersons reports? Alderman Barzak?
Along with à la carte this year, for the first time, if anybody's ever come by the tent with the entertainment, on Saturday night, there's going to be a pre-à la carte and that's going to go from 6:00 until 10:00 o'clock. Steve Cohen is going to play, he's a jazz person, plays saxophone, et cetera. So the entertainment's going to be nice and mild. Come back, buy a beer, help support the Christmas parade and the bid district, I believe, is the other portion that it goes to. And that's going to be on Saturday night, June 4th, from 6:00 to 10:00. Everybody's welcome to come and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Barzak. Any other reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Divine.
Alderman Weigl.
Just a quick thing for all my friends when we have blood drives, they say, if you only had given me more warning, Wednesday, June 22nd, there will be a blood drive right here at City Hall, Wednesday afternoon from 1:00 till 6:00 p.m. You can just walk in, there's a Facebook page for it too, but mark your calendar. I'll remind you again, Wednesday, June 22nd, a Wednesday afternoon from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. It'll actually be, I believe, downstairs in our art gallery area. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigl. Any other reports from the alderpersons?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
I wonder if I, I know he's not part of the, you know, the events or whatever we attend to, but if I could, perhaps to talk a little bit about the two public hearings tonight, if I be able to do that, you know. Because I have some questions. To me, I think we still have a good democratic process in West Alice or many other communities. The fact that is, 80%, 80% of any street project in West Alice is paid by citywide tax dollars. And the rest of it is paid by the people from that particular project of renovations or repave, whatever the project is. Then, the fact that is that we cannot let infrastructures decay because it's not a question of we save money. And I could understand some reasons some people cannot afford, you know, I mean, there's many reasons in many families. But we cannot just hold projects behind. We can't do that. You know, 20 years ago, I had, right on 60th and KK Parkway, at that time, we had a director of Public Works, Leroy Craftjack. I said, Leroy, I'm sick and tired, two of your people have come from Milwaukee, south of KK, that road has been in disastros for so many years already. It's all bumps, potholes, Milwaukee keep patching that. I said, we should put a sign here that says, welcome to West Alice. So the fact stands that Milwaukee's been over 20 years, 25 years, that road, 60th, is already the way it's been 25 years ago. And many people complain about it because the roadway the way it is. So to me, West Alice, the way the process is, in the long run, again, it's cost that many property owners cannot afford it, but we can't just sit staying it and let things pass through without doing anything. That's what we have to realize. It's hard. But I don't want to hear that we have a democratic process in this community, we digest issues, we work on issue, I mean, each alderman here. So we have open doors. But the fact that is, we cannot have projects just go down and not doing anything because if you don't do this this year, we're not going to do it the following year. You know, everybody says, well, I can't afford this year. But the question is, it is, we have to stand for what we believe is good for the long term of this community. We can't just let things go, you know. I mean, I understand there's many reasons, I repeat again, many families they have their reasons for. But we can't just sit staying it, you know. And I heard about KK Parkway. They did KK Parkway on my street. You know, the street is three years old already and still they resurfaced it? There's no concrete base, they put about this much sand on the bottom. And that KK Parkway, I mean, still it's solid from three years ago. So it's not a question, so a good asphalt jobs, it lasts a long time and it saves each property owner's dollars. And the fact that is, you don't pay all the property taxes to the, to the West Alice. We have, over 50% goes to the school district to educate our kids and then the rest of it goes with police protections, fire departments, which we need, police, we need them. So those are part of the service. Then we got public works. We need to pave the streets, we need to do a lot of those issue that community needs to move forward. Many communities, I know people live in New Orleans, this is, well, I'm paying $5,000 for property taxes. You know the garbage hauling, how much it costs them? Over $1,000 a year because they have a private contractor. Nothing is free in life, you know? And in West Alice here, you pay only $120 a year for a household to have your garbage and recycling pickup. That's what we have in West Alice. You pay taxes, sure, it's not an acre of land, but still, we tried to minimize, we didn't raise the taxes to the extent where people really, you know, 5%, we tried to keep the tax down, at least unless it was over 1%. That's why we raised the taxes because the cost of buying material to keep the city going, it costs money. Let's face that, it was not just look the other way. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
That's all?
Yes, that's all.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Any other alderpersons reports?
Mayor Divine.
Alderman May.
A very important meeting is coming up next week, Tuesday, a week from tonight, May 24th, at Lane Elementary regarding Highway 100. The DOT is coming to the public with several options for the, well, students call them options, we don't get to pick and choose. They're coming to us with several alternatives that they're considering for the redesign of Highway 100. And it's very important that the, the public comes out and has their say and influence in the design of the highway. So please come out, I'm going to state it again, that's next week, Tuesday, May 24th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a stop and go thing. Stop in whenever you want, leave when you, leave when you want, at Lane Intermediate. As it happens, that same evening, there's also a National Avenue redesign meeting happening from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at City Hall, and that's equally important. Again, both meetings, you can stop in, hop to the other one, but please, please come out to these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other alderpersons reports?
Mayor Divine.
I was hoping we'd have one on that side of the room, Alderperson Rankie.
And on the wider side, I have to give the report for the Christmas Parade Bowling fundraiser that was held at the Riviera Lanes this past Saturday night. It was very successful and if you missed it, you missed a fun time. This particular committee, the Christmas Parade Committee, raises their own private funding collections. They are an entity that decided we wanted a Christmas parade in West Alice and so they have to do their own fundraising, but they did a fine job. We raised $4,500 that evening with a chicken dinner that was delicious, the auctions were great. Everything was, was really well planned. I have to thank Don Falk and his committee for, for a wonderful, wonderful job for the evening. Then on the a little more serious side, several members of the Celebration Committee will be, will be delivering special gifts to the veterans at the VA on the Sunday before Memorial Day. Let's not forget them and what they did for our country. Memorial Day is a special day that we set aside for these people that gave us our freedom, you might say. And the Celebration Committee is really all in favor of helping these veterans and thanking them for, for their service to our country. I have to thank the staff and the children at the Safe Program of Walker School and Longfellow School who wrote special letters and drew pictures for these veterans that we deliver. We also give them coupon books from the funds that the citizens have raised at Christmas time, given for this project. But I'd like to read this little, little letter that one of the students wrote along with the drawing on the picture. Dear U.S. veterans, thank you for serving our country. Even though some don't show it, you're all appreciated a lot because you risked your lives every day to protect us. Without you, America wouldn't be the same. Thanks again for protecting us. Yours truly, Natalie from Walker, Walker Elementary Safe Program.
Thank you, Alderperson Rankie. Do we have any other alderpersons reports this evening?
Mayor Divine.
Alderman Lysak.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of May 3rd, 2016.
You have a motion with a second by Alderman Vitale. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J on your agendas this evening, I'll ask to refer, I'm sorry, place item four on file and refer items five through nine- on file and refer items five through nine to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Barzak. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item K, standing committee reports, we have none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysak.
Move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderperson Rankie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.[1776.83][1776.83](APPLAUSE).